This conference will now be recorded.
Everyone, welcome to the May 15th South Whitehall Township Planning Commission Meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, God, the States of America, republic, nation, for God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Manhart, would you like to do the roll call?
Yes, Trevor Donbach, not here. Tim Dugan, here. Todd Ferger, here. Brian Height, here. Diane Kelly.
Is text available online?
Mark Luth, not present. David Wilson, here. Five members sufficient for a quorum.
All right, I'd also like to make note of township staff and consultants present. We have Christopher Stroller, long-range planner, Dave Manhart, Director of Community Development, April Wilk, Land Development Coordinator, Aaron Bet, Township Engineer with a pitcock company, and Jennifer Aldifer, Township Solicitor. I always forget the official. Township Manager Tom Petrucci and Director of Township Operations Herb Bender. Mr. Manhart, would you like to go over the meeting rules?
Yes, rules for participation and etiquette during planning commission meetings. For an orderly meeting wherein all attendees may be able to fully participate, we ask that you adhere to the following rules. In order that both in-person and remote attendees may hear all comments or questions, all in-person attendees will be required to use microphones at all times. We request that remote attendees please mute your microphone or telephone, avoid background noise that may cause interference in the meeting and make it difficult for others to hear. Staff may mute the microphones of remote attendees if needed. Public questions and comments will be taken at periodic intervals throughout the agenda. Unless otherwise permitted by the chairman, residents shall limit their comment to no more than five minutes. Chairman or vice-chairman, as the case may be, may extend comment beyond five minutes in his or her discretion. The chairman may rule out of order scandalous comments, irrelevant and redundant comments, and comments designed to disrupt the meeting. For in-person attendees, please sign in. On the appropriate sign-in sheet, please raise your hand to be recognized, then move to the podium when directed. State your name, address, and comment or question. For remote attendees, the chat box feature will be active throughout the meeting. If you have a comment or question, please type your full name and address in the chat box. When you are recognized and so directed, please unmute your microphone and state your comment or question. Mute your microphone when done. For those who are accessing the meeting by phone only, staff will periodically ask for caller comments and unmute any callers. Callers must identify their name and address prior to making a comment. Your cooperation and adherence to these rules will ensure an orderly and respectful meeting.
Thank you. And before we get further into the meeting, I just want to let everyone know that 81 and 111 South Cedar Crest Boulevard has been removed from the agenda. So if anyone is online or in attendance for that application, we won't be discussing that tonight. All right, so we're on Agenda Item Number Three, Review and Approval of the April 10th, 2025 Meeting Minutes. Does anyone have any comments on the meeting minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second. There's in favor. Aye.
I would oppose.
Diane, can you use the chat?
If I could just add that unless we have two-way communication, so she can call in and speak, vote, but we can't be typing in the chat.
Do we have any other abstentions?
I also abstain.
All right. Motion passes. All right, Agenda Item Number Four, Kleins Island Sewer Regional Act 537 Plan.
I'll handle the presentation for this. So myself and Herb Bender, Director of Township Operations, are both in attendance tonight to review the plan with the members of the Planning Commission. So as of April 16th, a 60-day clock started for the Township Planning Commission to submit comments regarding the Act 537 Official Plan that was submitted by the Lehigh County Authority through their consultant, Arrow Consulting. So what this is, it's an Act 537 Plan for the Kleins Island Sewer Regional Act 537 Plan. And it was sent to you separately outside of the packet digitally. So myself and Herb wanted to attend this evening's meeting to ascertain if there are any questions or items regarding the plan, whether technical or administrative in nature. And we also plan to attend the Thursday, June 12th Planning Commission Meeting for formalized action concerning the plan. But we also wanted to identify that there's a narrow timeline between the June 12th meeting and the deadline to submit comments, which is June 15th. So we would ask if you have any questions, especially if ones that are of a technical nature, please let us know this evening so that we can finalize our comments as applicable during the June 12th. Alan Tam. So to provide you some background on why this Act 537 Plan is necessary, from late 2018 to early 2019, the Kleins Island Waste Water Treatment Plant exceeded its established hydraulic capacity of 40 millions of gallons of treated product per day for multiple consecutive months due to sustained infiltration from saturated groundwater and heavy rainfall. So that resulted in a formal Chapter 94 violation by the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection. So anytime you have a capacity limit where it's exceeded for three consecutive months, that constitutes a violation. So this happened in both November 2018 to January 2019 and March 2019 through May 2019. So subsequently, the Department of Environmental Protection approved a temporary plan and included a connection management plan, and that also required a formal long-term strategy to be in place by 2025. So the regional Act 537 Plan is a long-term solution to manage wastewater conveyance and treatment capacity through the year 2050 within the region. It's developed in direct response to the Chapter 94 regulatory mandates imposed by the Department of Environmental Protection, and it specifically prioritizes inflow and infiltration reduction, regional collaboration, and future infrastructure planning without requiring major short-term capital infrastructure projects. So just to provide an overview of the commitments in the plan, so it would require negotiation and execution of new inter-ministerial agreements, specifically for cost sharing for current and future projects between all the aforementioned municipalities and entities. And also, it will take into account new billing methodologies where the goal is to streamline those and to make them based on actual flows, as well as to incentivize the inflow and infiltration removal efforts. The connection management plan will continue under the supervision and direction of the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection, which it was our understanding working through this process that DEP is strong. Priority of the plan. It will continue source reduction based on the 2021 Flow Characterization Study and any future sanitary sewer evaluation studies work described in each individual signatory's inflow and infiltration source reduction plan. It will also include a sewage billing meter program that includes continuous data validation and data capture in a read-only combined portal for municipal access to real-time flow data. The South Whitehall metering system is actually being looked at as the preferred option at this time. So just a little FYI there. The completion of the Kleins Island Waste Water Treatment Plant Influent Pump Replacement Upgrade Project, so that's currently in design and permitting stages, and will increase the plant's capacity to manage peak wet weather flows. So it's important to note that there are specific commitments of South Whitehall in this plan. So that includes our identified source reduction project, which will continue through 2035, which is an investment of approximately $5,940,000. So that includes sewer rehabilitation, manhole sealing, and other maintenance-focused improvements targeting to high-priority basins throughout the township, which was also in accordance with the 2021 Flow Characterization Study. Other commitments would be that we will participate with the regional sewage billing meter program, which, as I mentioned, includes the real-time read-only flow monitoring data. We would engage in inter-ministerial agreement negotiations. In the packet was a term sheet, which would start to kick off the content that would be subject to the negotiations. We would have to financially support the pump station upgrade project through our capital costs that are passed down to us from LCA. And we will need to complete the reporting requirements that help to quantify the inflow and infiltration reductions, which are subject to DEP review. And then that would be reviewed not only by, you know, in accordance with South Whitehall's requirements, it would be reviewed for the region as a whole, and that will then determine whether DEP lifts the Chapter 94 violation. So basically, it's projected to be 101.5 million across all the region, and then for South Whitehall, it's 5.94 million through 2035. So it's also important to note, does not require any major borrowing by the township that was also reconciled in a rate study, which we conducted last year. The rate study did recommend possible rate increases over that 10-year period to be assessed during the fiscal year planning of each budgetary cycle. Basically, that's a very high-level overview of a very voluminous and comprehensive document. But I wanted to see, and Herb is here as well, to answer any specific questions you may have.
Before we get to questions, I just wanted to test the microphone.
Shall I repeat everything I said?
Anyone have any questions?
Does the township administration have any issues with this plan as presented?
No, we feel it's a compromise across multiple entities and municipalities. And while we can't absolutely state with a certainty that it will help us to lift the Chapter 94 violation, because there's so many factors at play, including all the aforementioned entities, it really requires regional collaboration, and everyone is going to have to effectuate their own specific plan in accordance with DEP requirements. And as long as everyone does that, we have a very strong chance of having the Chapter 94 violation lifted. But all of that has to actually happen, and has to be verified and quantified by DEP.
I just wanted to make sure there was no burning red flags or anything that, you know, that the administration had targeted or had seen. My follow-up question is, how far along is the township in their I&amp;I?
That's a wonderful question for Herb.
We are up to date with the sheet that is on the screen and was included. We actually did our trunk lines last year in Sewer Station 56 and 54. This year, we are looking, we're going to be going to the board for approval to do Sewer Basin 56, the rest of the 115 manholes, then every manhole will be lined. And a new sewer dish put in to capture the I&amp;I that can come through the top also of the manhole lid. We did do, I did just pull reports today with Mike Elias for MS 56 of a storm that was pretty comparable after the lining and before the lining. And we see a big reduction in the flow already just from doing the trunk line. So the true test is going to be after we seal the rest of these up in the Sewer Basin 56, what the flows really look like there. I can also let you know, we have seen some reduction already when we put the temporary meters in three of the six sewer meter basins. So the new meters do read more accurate than we currently have also.
Good, thank you.
Great. So in layman terms, I&amp;I is inflow and infiltration. And basically, what that means is, you know, there's sanitary, and please correct me if I'm wrong, there's sanitary sewer that may have cracks in them. And when you have a large rainfall event, the rain soaks into the ground and goes into the sanitary sewer. And then basically, you have rainwater going to the treatment plant, and that's a major issue. And this Act 537, a big component of it is fixing that via sealing the manholes. You indicated lining the pipe and then installing the proper metering, so that could be measured. And the goal is, when the metering is installed and measured, that the flows have been reduced because the rainwater isn't going into the pipes, and then the treatment plant isn't treating rainwater. Is that?
Perfectly stated.
We have an inflow problem. We have some infiltration, but our inflow is the big problem. When it rains, our meters spike. Soon as the rain stops, it goes right back down. So that's why we're focusing more on the manholes and sealing them up, because it's more of an inflow than an infiltration problem.
Yeah, thank you.
Beyond those things, Herb, are there other I&amp;I practices that the township is looking at? Trying to get to like maybe higher hanging fruit versus the low-hanging fruit?
Yeah, what we're looking at is getting all the manholes sealed up in our plan that we have laid forward. And the first three areas we're going to work on is 51, 54, and 56. Those are our three problem childs, we'll call them. And once we get through that, then we're going to look at cast-in-place for the pipes, if we have to line manhole to manhole, because there's four or five decent-sized cracks in the pipe to eliminate all that inflow then.
Any online? All right, while we're checking online, I believe you mentioned it's a 60-day comment period from April 16th. As of this minute, it doesn't seem like there's too many comments. Are you looking for any additional feedback?
No, what we'll do then is we'll come back to you in the June 12th meeting. So this was just the first step in the process. So after all of the planning commissions review it, including the Lehigh Valley Planning Commission, then LCA will then open up a public notification and comment period. So then, at that point, I wanted to make sure it's apparent that, you know, any member of the public can receive, can review the plan and then submit comments as well. But that hasn't officially commenced yet, and that would be a 30-day public review. Once that's completed, it would go to the Board of Commissioners for municipal adoption via resolution, and then it gets submitted to DEP, and they have six months essentially to review the plan.
I have one other question, sorry to go down. What about commercial facilities? Like, is there an opportunity, and this is across the whole system wide?
That's excellent.
Is leverage like to commercial facilities to become more efficient, to reduce what they're putting into wastewater?
That's an excellent question, and one of the components that's going to be looked at as part of the inter-ministerial agreement negotiation process is a regional surcharge program for commercial entities, so that is being contemplated.
All right, thank you. Hear anything online? Any public comment? No public comment? Any public comment online? Nope. All right.
All right. So we'll come back June 12th and ask for a formal vote to memorialize any written comments you'd like to submit.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, we're on Agenda Item Number Five, Subdivision Review, Parkland School District High School Expansion. Is there anyone in the audience, other than the applicant and applicant representatives here, interested in this application? No one in person, anyone online in the audience interested specifically for this application? No? Okay. All right, we'll start with the township staff presentation.
This is an application to further develop a property located at 2700 North Cedar Crest Boulevard. The plan is proposing five building expansions to the individual sections of the existing high school. We recently saw this as a sketch plan, not a couple of months ago. In addition to the building expansion, they're proposing extending the bus loop at the end of the building that will create additional bus parking spaces. And they're also proposing a new parking lot at the front of the existing parking lot, and then some minor improvements to the treatment plant on site. We are currently not recommending approval. There are still a few outstanding issues. We're waiting for clarification, including PennDOT HOP improvements and the impacts of those. The applicant is here to answer any questions and perhaps discuss waivers, deferrals, provide an update for the PennDOT driveway, and answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Manhart. We'll move on to the Township Engineer Presentation.
As Steve has mentioned, we had previous discussions with the applicant. We saw this as a sketch plan in front of all of you, but this is the second resubmission for this project. They were going to be on for the March PC, but were pulled from the agenda. Some of the items that are contained within our comment letter are in regards to turning movements onto the site at Cedar Crest Boulevard. The current TIS is showing a dual left turn into the high school driveway. Based upon discussions with the school district team, they're awaiting comments from PennDOT, and we'll approach that at that time. Their understanding of our concern with students moving very quickly through that intersection. There are also stormwater management comments that we had spoke with Laura about this week, and we'll look to get those cleared up. And additionally, there is a deferral requested for frontage improvements along Cedar Crest Boulevard, Ritter Road, and Orfield Road. The deferral is specific to cartway widening, curb, sidewalk, monuments, and shade trees. We understand that Cedar Crest Boulevard and Orfield Road are PennDOT jurisdiction, but Ritter would be a township road. Based upon dates discussion and our discussions with the applicant, I think they're looking tonight for some direction moving forward so they can proceed with their plan. The applicant is free to discuss anything further.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to the applicant presentation.
Thank you. As we seated, you did see this in the sketch plan version prior to this. The proposed building additions really haven't changed since the sketch plan version that you saw earlier. We did make a change to our stormwater management. Our spray irrigation location did change slightly. And we are in receipt of all the township comments. There were a few things that I did want to highlight in the Township Engineers' letter that we need to make some changes to the plan or perhaps a waiver request. So we just wanted to kind of discuss those with you tonight. There was one comment in the Township Engineers' letter about some disturbance we're doing on the steep slope that's just south of sort of the internal driveway that goes east-west through the school district property. That's the area where we're going to be putting the spray irrigation field. That area is not really being used for anything else by the school district, so it seems to be the perfect location to put spray irrigation. There is a provision in the township's ordinance for a maximum of three-to-one slope, and we are proposing some limited grading in that area of one and a half to one slope. And the purpose of that grading is to provide access to that area for both installation of the storm sewer, or the, sorry, spray irrigation system, and for future maintenance of that system.
Can we zoom in?
Yeah, I believe there's a better plan. I believe if we go to 2.4 or 3.4.
Also, could you just provide your, Laura, I know you, but can you provide your name just for the record?
My apologies, I'm Laura Everly. I work for Ruthour Bowden Engineering, and I'm the civil engineer on the project. Okay, so what you see on the screen right now, the large circles there are the radius that will spray stormwater. So in the center of that circle is actually a sprayhead. And that water will be captured in the existing, some renovations to the existing detention pond that's on the site. We're going to make use of that detention pond. We're going to create some existing, some additional storage in that existing detention base. existing detention basin. And that captured water will then be sprayed across that sloped area just south of the internal driveway for the school campus. And what you can see is sort of the darker striped areas. If you zoomed in, you can see that those are revised grading, revised topography lines on the plan. And as I mentioned, they are 1.5 to one, so steeper than is currently allowed by the ordinance. When we resubmit, we'll be submitting a waiver request to be allowed to do that limited area of 1.5 to one. We will be proposing permanent erosion control matting in that area to help stabilize that steep slope. The spray irrigation system will spray the absolute minimum allowed by DEP, which is a half an inch per day. So the spray system will not be creating any surface runoff on that steep slope. All of the water that's sprayed will be evapotranspirated. It'll be used by the plants, the vegetation on the slope. So we won't be increasing the runoff on that steep slope through the spray irrigation system.
With steep slopes, I know sometimes in the past, we would refer that to the geotech to look at and provide.
Right. And we will provide more detail on the permanent erosion control matting that we're proposing for that slope so that the geotech will be able to weigh in on how we're proposing to protect that slope after it's constructed.
We had spoken to Laura offline, obviously not here now, but it's a hard situation based upon the existing slope. So we would refer to the geotech for their comments and ask for any recommendations they would provide, you know, to find the waiver be sufficient.
And I think actually, if you were to take that area and try to grade it at three to one per the ordinance, it would actually require grading to the south of the property. You wouldn't be able to catch up before you needed to cross Ritter Road. So it's, it would be physically impossible to, to put that grading in place in compliance with the ordinance.
You know, the soaps are in effort to reduce regrading the whole area and ripping up the whole area.
Right. So we're trying to minimize the disturbance to some of the trees that are in the area. Because I think as you go further south from the spray irrigation area, between that spray area and the wastewater treatment plant, there are some wooded areas. So we're trying to minimize our disturbance to some of the more mature vegetation on the site. So we've tried to limit the amount of grading that we're proposing there.
You know, when you put the requests together, just make sure you provide all the reasoning and everything so everyone understands why.
Absolutely.
And in that same area, I think in the original development, there might have been some portions of that that had a fair amount of cut and fill. All right. That was already manipulated from the pre-existing natural condition.
And it does look like the slopes that exist in that area today range anywhere from seven to one, all the way up to 1.5 to one. So there are some fairly steep slopes in that area already.
We're looking at it on Google Earth here. Is there any chance we could pull it up on screen? There does look like there's a fair amount of trees that, you know.
We did try to stay in the area that's more, see, that's the wastewater treatment plant that's kind of in the center of the screen there. To the north of that is really more kind of scrub vegetation. It's not really mature trees. As you move along the school district driveway there, and you get to the west a little further, there are some mature trees. We stopped short of that area. So we really tried to minimize the destruction of trees in that area to install a stormwater management practice.
This is an effort to try to preserve existing woods.
Correct.
Where's the basin at now? You referred, you're going to increase capacity?
Right. So if you, in this view, if you move to the east of it, right there, the darker shade, yes, that's the basin right there.
It's like a vegetated basin.
Yes. So we're not changing the footprint of that basin. We're actually going to dig one section of it a little bit deeper to hold the water that will then be spray irrigated. So one other thing we wanted to mention tonight, there was some discussion of the HOP improvements required on Cedar Crest and Orfield. The dual left turn lane was something that came up in our initial discussions with PennDOT. We do expect to hear back from PennDOT next week, some response to what we've already submitted to them. And what we expect to happen is that at that point, we want to sit down both with PennDOT and the township and have a discussion and come to a consensus about what the appropriate HOP related improvements are going to be on Cedar Crest Boulevard. So the township will be involved in that discussion, and hopefully we'll have sort of finalized improvements when we come back to the township with our resubmission.
Do you want to have questions about that? No, I would just make a comment. You know, I think a lot of citizens in the community and neighboring communities have concern about how that bottleneck's already there, you know, and of course, the school district is doing their best to try to forecast growth and needs into the future. But then also further north on Cedar Crest, outside of our township, there's additional proposed development, which is outside of our control. But hopefully those are things that PennDOT will keep in mind.
Right.
Are there any thoughts how, because if there, two left turn lanes would provide more to get more traffic off of Cedar Crest, but looks like it narrows down to one lane when you get into the driveway. So how would the two left turn cars going left, how do they merge into one lane in the driveway?
So my understanding is that the southbound right turn into the property would become a yield. So those cars coming southbound and turning right would have to pause for the two left turn lanes into the site. So there's actually two lanes coming into the property right now. So the two left turn lanes would come into the two lanes that already exist in the driveway. The right turn movement coming southbound would have to yield to those left turn movements. And then the two left, the two lanes that come in, in the existing condition, one of them turns right to go up into the parking lot, and the other continues through to go further into the campus, if that makes sense.
Yeah, it seems to be a complicated situation. So if you could just make sure you're copying the township and Township Engineer, any updates with PennDOT?
Absolutely. And like I said, we're supposed to hear back from PennDOT next week. So we expect to be working on this in the near future. And we'll keep the township apprised and involve the Township Engineer in some of the discussions. One other comment that I wanted to mention in the Township Engineers' letter was related to the extended bus parking. They mentioned that some of the bus turning movements looked like they encroached on the new parking spots, the 11 additional parking spaces for the bus. I just wanted to explain to the board how this, how the bus loop actually functions currently and will continue to function. When buses come into the bus loop, they pull as far into the bus loop as they can and then park in the last available space. And so they fill in from the end of the bus loop back. They load their passengers, and then they leave in the order that they came in. So essentially, there's no bus pulling along the nose of any other parked bus, if that makes sense. So even though it may look like that, that bus movement that's on the plans cuts off the front of those parking spaces, there will never be a bus parked there with another bus crossing in front of it, because they pull in in order and they leave in order. And that's the way the bus loop functions now. That's the best opportunity for student safety, that they all leave, enter and leave in an orderly manner like that. So that's why there's a little bit of overlap between the vehicular movement and the parking spaces.
So what you're saying is that bus drivers follow car line rules better than other car lines?
Apparently. I think the only other thing that we wanted to discuss tonight and hopefully get some clarification or some feedback from the Planning Commission was on the deferral request. And the Township Engineer did mention this. We did ask for a deferral from road improvements along Cedar Crest, Orfield, and Ritter Road. And that did include cartway widening, curb, sidewalk, and street trees. As far as Ritter Road is concerned, we are not proposing any new access points along Ritter Road into the school campus. We're really not changing the traffic on Ritter Road at all. We're not increasing the number of cars on Ritter Road, or buses for that matter. And on Orfield Road and Cedar Crest Boulevard, the improvements on those two roads are going to comply with essentially the PennDOT requirements and whatever we negotiate between PennDOT and the township. So that's why we're requesting the deferral. This is in keeping with the deferral that was granted to the school back when the school was originally built. So we're hoping to get some feedback from the Planning Commission today, because that will allow us to continue with our design for our resubmission.
Does anyone have any comments? Because it seems there's three roads. They may be classified differently, and there's a lot of different items like cartway widening, curb, sidewalk. We also have the Jordan Creek walkway. So a lot of times, it's good to itemize these and break it down for each one. And I don't know, is there a waiver request letter that, you know, spells out, you know, for Ritter Road, the township requirement for cartway is X? We want to, you're requesting to keep it at the current width of Y, which is a difference of so many feet. Is that broken out? It might be easier for us to...
I apologize. I don't have a copy of the deferral letter in my packet. I don't know that we called out that specifically. One thing that I will mention is that part of the original development back in 1997-ish, the required additional right of way along all three roads was dedicated to the township. So that right of way does already exist.
You'll see that followed up in the comment. I think it's our comment, general comment too, asking for right of way to be shown in accordance with the 2004 plans. So that's when those plans were recorded, what Laura is talking, referencing.
In the packet, I guess that's what, 106 and 107?
That one would be 48 is the deferral request.
Do you all have any comments? Questions?
I think, like the chairman said, I think it'd be better if we had it broken out, and then we could à la carte, you know, curb versus sidewalk versus street tree. Yeah. Rather than a blanket.
Yeah, so we all have hard copies of the referral request in front of us. That image that was pulled up provides some good info, and maybe we just systematically, one by one, go through each one and discuss it. So we'll start with Cedar Crest. Cartway is required. Is it 25 foot half width? Do we know what the existing is?
So Dave, I had made this plan this afternoon, just so it'd ease in talking tonight. What's shown on the plan is what would be required, what pie ordinance. Cedar Crest Boulevard and Orfield Road are considered arterials. Ritter Road is considered a collector road. So based upon the plan that was provided, there is plan coverage of the overall image of the site, but it's kind of hard to take off what the actual cartway is, just because the scale is so small. So it would be variable in certain situations. We did point it out as what would be required. Orfield Road and Cedar Crest Boulevard towards the end of our parcel, the parcel, it seems like it might fall a little bit short of what would be required. Again, this is a PennDOT road as well, but. Certainly.
I did see plans that show the walking path, which I believe would be an upgrade compared to just typical sidewalk. Do you want to go over that and that location? Because I would think that's an upgrade over the standard sidewalk, and I'd rather see the walkway than...
So the township staff had requested that their design engineer for the path provide us with their, the current design as of right now. They're still working on finalizing the design. So they did provide us with a CAD file, and we brought in their layout for the trail as far as they've gotten with their design at this point. Currently on the plans, we do say that the trail is to be designed and constructed by others, because the design is still underway. So that's not the final, necessarily the final layout of the plan. The easement for that trail has been already provided by the school district. So we do have the approximate location of the easement provided on the plans. And the easement agreement does state that once the design of the trail is finalized, that a description of that easement will have to be provided to the school district and agreed upon, and the deed for the dedicated easement will be amended with that future description. So right now, the trail layout and, in effect, the easement itself are a little bit in flux, because it depends on what the engineer comes up with for the design of the trail in its final form. But so far, right now, we are sort of showing it on our plans as a placeholder, and showing that none of our improvements are in that easement or get in the way of the proposed trail alignment.
I believe township is in process of getting grants to fund the construction. Is that...
We're finalizing design to get ready for submission for grants, because we're not at the point where we have a grant lined up or anything. So the next steps after design would be applying for grants.
The walking trail is something we want, and it was like township, the township has some pride in, in that.
Yes. And I think as far as like justifying waiver and deferrals, I think sidewalk deferral, if there's a trail that's going in, that's kind of a easy one to defer. Some of the other, and when we talked about parsing out, I think Orfield Road is a pretty straightforward deferral, because this is, I mean, all the improvements are on the other side of the school, and nothing's really heading over towards Orfield. So I think there's the rationale of kind of parsing out some of the deferral requests makes sense, because street trees and, you know, since nothing's going on over there.
Yeah, there's a lot of different items, and it may help if it's really itemized, and each item justification and reasoning is provided. I don't know if we're going to be able to hash out all that tonight and provide firm response, but we had a waiver request that itemized everything and provided the reasoning. When we get the packet in advance of the meeting, everyone can individually look at it and gather their thoughts. But we can continue to provide some general input tonight. Yeah, I think where the walkway is being proposed, it makes sense not to put sidewalk in. In terms of Orfield Road and Cedar Crest, those are PennDOT roads. As Mr. Height was saying, PennDOT does, you know, lean on us to provide input.
But I think, I mean, just to point out some things, along Cedar Crest Boulevard, as you go north from the school district driveway, Cedar Crest Boulevard starts to gain significantly in elevation compared to the elevation of the school building itself. And there is... And there is an older farmhouse right along Cedar Crest Boulevard that really is very close to the front edge of the road. So I think to put a sidewalk in there would be difficult just from topography and the geometry of the road and the closeness of that, that existing structure there. As far as Orfield Road, I don't know that there's necessarily a need for a sidewalk along that location either. I'm not sure where that would connect to and which, what pedestrians would be using that.
Are those new homes putting, I see there's some new homes being constructed there. Are they putting sidewalk in? I guess whoever's doing that, I don't know if that's a sub...
I don't believe so.
I mean, they're not doing any road widening or...
So that was part of the, those lots were part of a subdivision from, I think, 2008?
Mm-hmm.
If not before. So there were a few lots that were still left vacant and that have recently been purchased and are being constructed. And I'll have to double check to see if they were granted waivers or deferrals on sidewalks.
Okay. And that area is a little, has more rural. And does anyone else, you have any, any thoughts on at least Orfield Road? I guess that one's the one we're talking about right now.
My only concern about the trail, and I'm talking about the southern section from the driveway south, is it's all contingent on funding and the last thing I would like to see is a, a gap in a trail with everything else constructed. Maybe there's a compromise between sidewalk and trail. I don't know. If it requires for just that section, that's part of the, because it would, you know, that's my initial thoughts.
Something to the extent if the funding for the walking trail falls through...
And in today's environment, you never know.
Yep.
So a deferral contingent on access to funding or something like that would be something that could be considered.
I mean, once we start building the trail from Lapp to Cedar Crest, I guess Lapp to Cedar Crest, then, you know, then we have an impetus to do something, pursue funding, fund it ourselves, which the budget, I know Tom doesn't want to hear that, but the budget is what the budget is and, and the Jordan Creek Greenway is a regional trail. It's a commuter trail. I don't know how that mechanism works with any kind of waiver, deferral, approval.
Anyone have any...
So on that note, I think the comment was expressed to itemize waivers and deferrals by road with the planning commission. And I guess I'm also looking to, we have the director of public works here as well, consider waivers and deferrals of splitting some of these roads. As Laura mentioned, the character of Cedar Crest to the north of the high school entrance is different than I think the area we're looking to the south. Ritter Road, you can see where the, the arrow is there around where the project is, the character. And I think the topography is much different to the west as it is to the east. Would it be the preference of the planning commission to have them split some of the waiver and deferrals at appropriate points on those roads as well? To maybe consider a waiver or deferral on, say, half of the roadway or sidewalk or street trees or something like that, but maybe not the other half?
That works for me if the staff uses their best judgment of, you know, like I'm looking at the farmhouse right now that I understand that the school district owns. I would hate to see that farmhouse go away just because we want a sidewalk that doesn't go anywhere north.
Yeah.
But, but if we have a trail vision to the south of that driveway, I think even trees or whatever.
I, I think a lot of it hinges on the design of the, the walkway. So, you know, is it, do we defer it? You know, because we, we don't want to put in all this curb and sidewalk and then it conflicts with the Jordan Trail.
And that, that's, I think, a perfect rationale for a deferral to that point when the final design and then we'll reevaluate, working with the school district to determine what's there and if we need to come back, we'll come back. But I think, I think we can work with the school district's team to kind of crap that waiver letter so that we have it split up like we've talked about here. And then at the next meeting, we'll have a nice clear list for us to go through. I think we can definitely work with them on that.
Better to measure, measure twice and cut once than, so it's better to have all that organized.
And, and the trail's going to be an asset for the school district because I've seen their cross-country team running on Ritter Road on certain mornings. Great thing that's going to happen eventually.
All right, so we'll wait for, you know, we won't make any formal decisions or tonight, but we'll wait for the waiver request letter. But it, it seems like a deferral may be, and I just speak for myself, maybe for this specific situation because of the walkway, maybe something we should entertain.
Does anyone have any, any thoughts? I just have a follow-up question for Chris. Is it still the vision that the Jordan Creek Greenway crosses at that light? Crosses Cedar Crest or that could be determined?
That'll be determined, I think, based on, yeah, I think based on what happens to the east of Cedar Crest, both north and south of that. But that was the intent of doing the design now to get it connected to the school. As you mentioned, we saw it as an asset to the school, to the students, to people using that facility. And it's a good ending point of somewhere that we can easily pick up. If development comes across the street, that would be appropriate to have the trail connected to. We're right there at an intersection to make that connection. For clarity, I think Brian, to your earlier comment, so we have the design that we're working on now that we're hoping to wrap up in the next few months, is that design from the terminus of the trail constructed last year at Lapp Road up to? So we would ideally pursue funding to construct that whole section. It's about a mile from Lapp Road to Cedar Crest here.
Understood. Thank you. And there's funding opportunities coming soon.
Thank you. Herb, do you have any, any thoughts?
No, I would concur with those that if the sidewalk was just deferred till a later date, if, till the plan's designed, see if we can come up with funding and then just revisit it after we get through that whole process.
All right, so I think, you know, the township has a lot of involvement with, you know, this trail and whatnot. And if you itemize a list, then staff has a lot of good input they could help provide.
Usually how we like it is the section, what the waiver's for and the justification, like why you think that should be appropriate for that. It helps us focus on like, oh, yeah. Because if we just see a standard style though, we're not sure like what your vision is.
Yep, we can revise that and come back. Yeah, I think most of the other items in the township engineer's letter are things that we can comply with. There were, I think, most of the items in the zoning letter were, we had already satisfied. Few other things we're going to work out with public works. But yeah, I think most of the other items were, will comply.
You have, and you are in conversation with PennDOT, waiting to get word back from them?
Yes, so we expect to hear back from them next week.
Oh.
Yeah. And then at that point, we'll look at, you know, what, what they're thinking, the requirements on Cedar Crest Boulevard are going to look like, because that's really what's in contention at the moment. And then if we need to, what we'll do is we can try to set up a meeting with PennDOT and with the township engineer to try to come to a consensus of what those improvements should look like.
I'll just reiterate, please include township staff and engineering because PennDOT's a completely different animal and sometimes township may end up being out of the loop. Any public comment? Well, I don't think anyone was in attendance, but...
There aren't people on.
I'm sorry. No, I was just gonna, going back to the beginning of the conversation, the Stormwater Sprayfield with the Geotech stuff.
Yes.
Keep that in mind.
Yes.
All right. Anything else you'd like to go over?
No, I think that was it. Thank you.
Um, do we need to, oh, take it under advisement or table anything or...
Unless you're specifically requesting for something to be voted on tonight, I would say no, because there's nothing really before.
Okay.
Yeah, I think at this point, we're going to go back and make revisions based on the township comments, based on PennDOT, meeting with PennDOT, the steep slope item we talked about tonight, and we'll revise and resubmit to the township.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Agenda item number six, transportation infrastructure update.
I'll take that away. I think the last meeting we attended, it was virtual, but we made note to the 309 and Tillman construction. Broadway is now open, so that alleviates some of the traffic that's going on there, which is a good thing, obviously. We ask people to just be mindful of an active construction site. LVPC is also moving forward with the federal guidelines and recommendations to reclassify roadways. It works hand in hand with the transportation plan that's happening right now. So that's a good thing that's happening. And then LVPC is also working on a list of priorities for TASA, which is Transportation Alternative Set Aside. It's funding for things that wouldn't be like a vehicle, trails, bicycle planes, and so on and so forth. And there is a workshop on May 21st where you can attend and there's a scoring system that they have base for different priorities for different projects moving forward throughout the region. That's all I have.
Thank you. Agenda item number seven, courtesy of the floor. No one physically in the audience, in person? Is there anyone online?
So for next month, it's looking like we will have the Act 537 plan. And I believe that's it.
All right. Then item number eight, adjournment.
So moved.
All right, there we go.